Alright. We started with the budget basis. But like this.
The United States of America. And the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Lots of all. I'll start with the same agenda. Anything that anybody needs full completely opposite. We have a motion to approve.
So move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, concerns, anything? All of them.
I.
Again. Well, two of the things that we uh just approved are two, two of our folks in new jobs. Caroline, you want to uh?
Elliot's gonna go on.
There Elliot?
Yeah, sure. So I wanted to introduce everyone to uh formally to Chris Fiola and Freddie Alvarado. Uh Chris was appointed at our last meeting as our maintenance mechanic. He's gonna be our lead maintenance worker for the district, uh running our team of maintenance guys uh inside, outside, all over the district. Uh Freddie Alvarado is our new lead custodial worker. Freddie's been here just over a year, uh has a ton of experience before coming to the district in leading custodial and maintenance crews. Uh we're really excited to have these guys in the positions they're in. Uh they're gonna be John's right and left hands uh respectively. Um and I'll just say for all the things you've heard us talking about, bragging about projects and things that are being uh done in this district. While we're doing our capital uh presentations and we're talking about people crawling around in tunnels and making uh repairs on the fly in the wee hours before the school day starts. So these two gentlemen here are two of the guys that are leading that charge. So.
Now you're part of the office to do that.
These are working supervisors. It's very clear. Uh but uh Freddie and Chris have done a phenomenal job of uh helping our team and leading the facilities crew. So we're just really trying to have them in these roles formally. Um you know, as Caroline always says, leadership happens way before positions happen. And these gentlemen have both shared uh their experiences and and showed us leadership in all of their appointments. So we're just excited to see what they do next.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
No, it's, I mean, right now, this is a very, we're, we're trying to make some major changes in the way and what we do and how we do it. Um so we're gonna count on you guys to, to make those things happen for us. Thank you. Alright, let's see.
Good luck.
Yes, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, next is the uh Bosie's budget presentation.
Superintendent members of the Millbrook Board of Education, I'm Matt Metzger, the school business official from Dutchess Bosie's. I'm here tonight really to present the uh twenty-four, twenty-five administrative budget. An important one because this is really the one that the districts get to vote on. This is really a list of our uh cabinet members and our, our board of trustees. Uh we currently have one vacancy on the board right now. This is really a, a pie chart I'd like to present. We're a hundred million dollar operation when we look at the entire Bosie's agency. What I'm gonna talk to tonight is really between twelve and one o'clock, which is about seven and a half percent of that uh total budget and that's really the, the non-retiree health administration budget, the retiree health. And then I always like to mention the capital rental because it is a, I think it is an important piece, although it's not voted on. You know, most, most of uh people think of our services in special education, uh for any technical institute. And you can see that certainly encompasses most of our budget. Uh just a really a quick reminder on our, on our really budget structure and our accounting structure of Bosie's. So there's really what I consider three main categories, the admin, capital and rent, uh program and services. I'd like to remind everybody it's a return of surplus. So at the end of the year, when we close our books down, we take the district contribution, which is our revenue. We subtract the expenditures, whatever that balance is, uh goes back to the school districts by the, uh newly in February of the following year. We, we, we don't have any unreserved fund balance. We do have some reserve fund balance, but we don't have any unreserved fund balance. And I always like to remind everybody that there's an incentive for doing uh business with Bosie because it does generate some Bosie aid for the school district. Speaking of the administrative piece of the budget, that's really the superintendent, the board of education, uh the board clerk, personnel and the business office. And then the retiree health insurance um is, is, is uh part of that as well. It's quite a burden on this budget. And I'll talk about that a little bit further. In the slides. And capital rental is really just that kind of maintaining their infrastructure.
Do you wanna, do you want questions as they come up or do you?
Either are.
Um just, I'm curious about the rentals, the um.
Yep.
One of the major points behind the uh that capital project was to get out of as many of those rentals as possible. How are we doing on that?
So these rentals are for in-district classrooms and it's, you'll see in a few slides, it's approximately sixty-five thousand dollars this year. We have arrangements with three school districts where we have Bosie's classes that are, that are in the districts and it's, it's part of the special ed program. And it's called an inclusion program so that they get to experience being, although a special ed student, they get to experience being in a regular school. So we're, that's really all the rent that we do have.
Okay, so we're, we're out of?
Yes, I'm not, we're not renting for um adult education anymore. We're not renting any space for alternative high schools. So we have eliminated that.
Okay.
Good question though. I always like to remind everybody your um, you know, how we determine your share is based on our lotto. That's the resident weighted average daily attendance. It's really, you know, it's, it's a non-arbitrary number so that we don't show any favoritism towards in the school districts. It's a state-generated number. When we look at the county, um as a whole, it's down about three hundred and fifty-four. Uh it's almost down less than, eh, less than one percent. That's been a, a trend consistently for probably fifty years now. When you look at Millbrook's, our lot, you're actually down uh forty from the previous year. Um and actually, you know, just, just under five percent down. Your share of what we need to collect for the admin and capital budgets is gonna be two point two percent of the county. So this is relatively good news tonight because your lot is down, your shares of, of the cost is down. If I were to raise the same amount of money as I did last year, you would actually see a decrease. But unfortunately, that won't be the case. I'll speak to that in a little bit. This is really the administrative uh budget. What we have here is uh the non-retiree piece is, is up just over two percent or about thirty-eight thousand dollars. The retiree health is up about one point five seven percent. We have about three hundred and twenty-five uh retirees at Bosie's. A lot of them are Medicare eligible, which means because we're in the uh Dutchess Educational Health Initiative, it's the first one to make it a little, little lower rate. So, and they've actually been rate sizing that. So we've seen a little bit of a, uh it's been, it's been favorable for us to say we haven't seen large decreases there. I would like to note to the transfers and inter-budget transfers, you see a negative number there. So we realized that the administrative piece is really the burden of the thirteen component school districts in Dutchess County. But we don't really entirely think that that's fair because we actually do some services for districts that are outside of the county. And what we do then is uh, for an example, we do a service for New Paltz or Highland Central School District. What we've been doing is, is putting out a ten percent admin fee on top of what we, of what we charge them. And then we're trying to bring that into this budget to kind of help work some of those costs as well. Retiree health insurance, as I wanted to elaborate on. When they're an active employee at Bosie's, they are, that cost is covered for in the service, the program that they're in. But upon retirement, it gets moved to this budget. So as I said, it becomes quite a burden. You know, I think the really, the philosophy behind that is programs may come and go. They may stop running after a while. And they want to make sure that their health insurance is covered. So that's why it's moved here. Uh it's important piece here, like your district, uh is your budget is voted on. Ours is voted by our components. And if uh our vote was to fail, basically, we would have to go to contingency. We would eliminate that thirty-eight thousand dollars. We have to lower our budget by thirty-eight thousand dollars. The retiree piece is not um considered part of that. Now to look at the uh revenue or contributions for next year. We see uh about a, a five point nine, six percent increase to our com- uh component districts. What we've had is a budget gap for a few years. They've been using a retiree accrual to kind of offset the uh component contributions. We are leaning off of that and this is actually the last year where we've been kind of reducing by four hundred thousand dollars a year. So the good news is going forward, my budget increase should more closely um be in line with, with what I need to uh collect from the district. So we're about three hundred and thirty-one thousand uh dollars in total next year. And this one, and uh Millbrook is up just under two percent or an additional twenty-three hundred dollars. I like to speak to the capital rental because I think although not voted on it, it's important so that you understand it. We have been consistent with the million dollars um a year to help with our infrastructure, to, you know, roofs and keep our buildings going. And as I already mentioned before, the sixty-five thousand dollars is really for the rental for the local school districts. This is down uh just under one percent um from the previous year. And uh Millbrook's is actually a decrease from last year from of about eleven hundred dollars. Based on uh twenty-two, twenty-three's Millbrook's participation through Bosie's, that includes cross contracts. You're about a three million dollar book of business for us. Uh it generated approximately uh three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in surplus. So that was the uh, you know, the, the revenue over the expenditure that gets returned. And it also generated five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in Bosie's aid. I would say that that's specifically Bosie's aid and you do participate in special ed courses as well, which is not included in that. But that generates a different kind of aid. That's a high-cost aid, so it's not gonna be in that number. So really return on your, on your money of about uh eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I like to just, you know, we'd like to mention your participation. Uh Millbrook has uh based on January enrollment, had eleven special and alternative ed students. You had five uh at Soul Point Center. There was one in the alternative high school. Uh four participated in Pegasus, which is a life skills in the old high school. And it was actually uh one person participant in an in-district uh special ed classroom. Thirty-two enrolled in a very technical program. Uh six were in computer hardware and networking, five in security and law. Four in automotive and technology, four in the culinary arts, four in the electrical trades, and there was nine in other assorted programs. So some key dates for you, April twenty-third will be the day that you vote on this administrative budget. This year, we are also looking to establish a career technical equipment reserve. This would allow us to keep some money in reserve fund balance and it would specifically need to be used for equipment for our career and technical program. So my example that I've been using as I go around is perhaps we need a new lift for automotive or we do, need a new welding machine. Bosie's cannot establish the reserve unless I get a majority vote from the component districts. So that being said, I need seven basically component districts to, to allow that to happen. Jump ahead a little bit here. Um I cannot put more than five hundred thousand dollars in it uh for a year. It's got a maximum of two million dollars. I don't think we're looking to do anywhere near that. And a, a question that's come up, is this an additional money that we're gonna raise from the district? It would not be. It would be um basically we determine at the end of the year, if we had a surplus in that program in the current technical program, if we did, we may decide to hold a little bit back and put it in that reserve. But as I said, the most important thing is to get voter approved and have it established first. We currently have three seats open on the uh, on the Bosie's board. Google quickly again here. Um Karen Burka from Pauling is actually right here behind me. And then Michael McFarlane, Judy Brand, Karen Smythe are running as well. And June twelfth is really for the, uh this is the administrative budget for, for the program side of the house, what the districts are gonna participate in. We're really looking for uh, we get our service requests back, we get our service request from Elliot back, we'll gather all the information. And that's really the starting point for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Um if you, or if you have one later and you'd like to send me an email or reach out to me, feel free to do that as well.
So Matthew, the, the uh, one of the subjects that's come up a few times recently is removing the cap on the CTE instructors on their salaries. Uh I mean, I think it's a good, the, the better those instructors are, the better our kids will do. Um but is that built into your budget at all?
No, we don't, we, it's, it's, it's um, it's not built into the budget. And it's, does not al- it does not always apply just to current technical. It's, it's, it's every program of Bosie's. And it's, and it's been that number for as long as I can remember and, and they, and they talk about it every year. But if you, if you really do the math on it, there's not many salaries that are at thirty thousand dollars. So there's a considerable amount of money that we're paying in salary that's not generated in Bosie's aid. Um so you know, I, I feel like we, you know, the power that we speak about this every year and I, and I don't disagree with you. I think we'd all like to see that at least, at least move up at some point.
Well, especially now, I mean, the, we're, you know, begging for new curriculum. We're, we're looking to have the students get, you know, whether it's, whether it's energy, resilience, whatever it is, we're looking for those improvements. And you can't really expect to hang on to instructors if you're not gonna pay them at least the equivalent to what teachers make.
Right.
Um I'm, we're just curious if that was, if you looked at what that would do to the budget.
It won't change the budget because we have to, you know, we have to pay the salary. So the salary is eighty-five or ninety thousand dollars, you have to pay that. Where, where you see it is on the, on the return side of it. It's, it's gonna be less Bosie's aid that's generated. So it really doesn't affect the budget side. Um I may add too, uh you know, I be- I became treasurer in two thousand and eight. And certainly the career technical enrollment now, I believe, is in the seven hundreds and I've never, it's great. I've never, you know, I don't, I remember it in the six hundreds, but I never remember it this high. Certainly all, we all understand the cost of higher education now and this is certainly a good alternative for students to take. So it's, it's a pretty exciting time there.
Other questions, Matthew?
Alright, have a great day. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bosie Spotlight is there for your entertainment. Alright, uh old business budget development presentation. Oh, Darren, did you wanna say something?
I did, I did. I don't, I don't wanna feel like you know, men endorse me or anything. I just. My front's a little furrowed, so I apologize. Um I lost my voice on Sunday. So um I did, I wanted to introduce myself too with words and you're administrator. So if I can get out in three minutes, I would appreciate that. So my name is Karen Burka, I'm resident of Pauling and the president of the Pauling Central School District School Board. And I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I want to introduce myself to all of you as a candidate for Dutchess County Bosie Board of Trustees. As Matt explained, there'll be three open seats. One term will begin on July first, two terms will begin in April, right after the Bosie's vote. I'm running because I believe that our students in Dutchess County deserve excellent career and vocational training and educational programs. We've all seen a shift in education from preparing all students to go to a four-year college to acknowledging that that approach doesn't fit all of our students' needs. In Pauling, our superintendent, Kim Fontana, was a member of the Education Department's Blue Ribbon Commission. And one of that group's primary recommendations was to include more career training and work experience in New York State graduation requirements. So that will be coming. I've become much more aware and invested in how Bosie's can improve upon its services. And I want to ensure that Dutchess County Bosie's provides our students with high-quality and relevant programs. That it can attract and retrain and retain great employees, as Karen just alluded to. And that it will do so within the budgetary needs of our school districts. In Pauling, more of our students are attending Bosie's programs, both in Dutchess County and also in Platte and Northern Westchester, through the foundation. And our costs have gone up as a result. We've also seen our special education costs skyrocket. And Bosie's can and should be an important partner to all of our school districts to provide high-quality special education services. I believe that getting onto the Bosie's Board of Trustees would be the best way to help make sure that that happens. In addition, what's relevant for us in Pauling and also here in Millbrook is that the third opening, the third seat on the board was because Rich Keller coffee, but we even talked step down. And currently, there's no representation from an eastern Dutchess district. So I think it's important that we continue to have a seat at the table, present our unique interests, being on this side of the county and we've been in county. In terms of my qualifications, I've been the school board president in Pauling for four years. I've been a member of our school district's audit committee since I was elected to the board six years ago. And I am a member of our district's communications committee. I held a key role in developing community support for successful quarter-million-dollar capital projects in Pauling to enhance our academic and athletic facilities. I'm passionate about education and providing our students with a fulfilling school experience. I have a long history of service in my home district of Pauling. I was a Pauling PTA president and I joined the school district's health and wellness committee more than a decade ago. And helped develop programs and policies that have made student wellness a priority in Pauling. Through these experience, experiences, I have learned the value of collaborative working relationships in our schools with our parents, students, administrators, teachers and staff. And if elected, I will try to bring these skills to my work with the other Bosie's trustees and all stakeholders. Professionally, I've been a freelance writer for about twenty years and I write about the internet marketing software industry. Prior to setting out on my own, I had a long career in the publishing and media business. I have excellent communication skills and I think that will help Bosie's promote its programs to our communities and also help keep our component school districts better informed. Uh I'm here tonight to ask for your vote on April twenty-third, or pass the nomination. Uh and clearly I received a nomination, so that was done about um March twentieth. And I appreciate you giving me to, to introduce myself personally to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for Karen? I just have to say thank you because I've been whining at, at the County School Board Association. People, you know, send us, send us a, a paragraph. Send, you know, come and visit the school board. And you're one of the few that have ever taken us up on that. And so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Harry. I know, we kind of feel the same way in Pauling. We like to see the candidates.
Yeah.
And a few have come over the years, but um I thought it was important and you're in tenth school district, so I think I'm gonna get to everybody.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright.
I'm happy to stay. Do I didn't wanna just come and speak for a little while and then?
You're, you're welcome to stay, uh, you know, if you're.
I found it really interesting to see other school district board meetings. Like it's been such a great learning experience for me and just even different agenda orders, different presentations. So I'll stay for a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Thank you very much. Alright, new, new business. Um do I have a motion to accept the donation from the, no, what did I do? What did I do?
What did I do?
Oh, never mind. See, that's how I run this. Alright, Elliot.
Yes, sir. Uh thanks, everybody. I have hard copies if anybody wants to see them.
Yes, I, I told him.
So as we usually do, we'll just start with a review of our timeline slide to show people where we are in this process. Uh we're at the four-two meeting, so uh we will notice without our budget amount, we'll go out uh the end of this week on the, April fifth. Um at the next board meeting, April sixteenth, the board will adopt the proposed budget and approve the profit tax report card that we sent in the state. This is kind of the last look at our draft, uh but we'll be asked on where to go ahead and adopt. And I'll explain, there's a couple of variables we're still dealing with, and I'll explain them in just a couple of minutes.
Sure. Uh so this red budget has three components. It's our first, it's a tripartite budget. There's a program component and a U S A component and a capital component. As you'll see, the program component is by far the largest and that's everything that has to do with educating our students. So it's very intentionally the largest. We want the majority of our money to go directly to the programming that impacts our students and their education. The administrative component, by design, we really try to keep in that ten percent range. Um and that's everything to do with administration, but also all the supplies and materials that go along with it. Any of the board of education expenses and any of the expenses related to payroll, payment resources, benefits, all of that. And then the capital component is everything to do with our buildings and our maintenance and operational staff. All of those expenses to keeping our buildings safe and running appropriately. Um one of the things that we were very proud of last year and the same is true this year is that our administrative budget represents the smallest and, or, or one of the smallest in the past six years. Um and that's the everything that we're attempting to do. Um it's very challenging, but we're having to be keeping it right around that ten percent mark, which is where we aim to be. And again, just for, you know, easy visualization, that bottom row there is the proposed ten percent administrative um seventy-six percent uh program and the fifteen percent capital. And Elliot is going to take us through some of the more fine-tuned expense numbers and then the revenue and continue on with potential contingencies.
So here's an update of the expense uh budget. And again, just as a review, these lines are actually budget categories. They're on a big budget, you know, hundred-page workbook. Uh so as you can see, um then on the right-hand column, you'll see the percentages of movement within those uh lines themselves. But really, the most important one is the bottom line here, that one point seven four percent. So we're, we're being very conservative with this year's budget and really only adding where we have to. Uh as a reminder for anybody watching at home, over sixty percent of our budget is contractually bound or beyond our control in terms of costs and escalation. Uh so for the things that we can control, we're really trying to be surgical and intentional with where we're putting our dollars. And right now, our expense budget is showing a one point seven four percent increase. Now, to balance the revenues, uh to balance our expenses, we have to also project our revenues. And so that's what's on this slide here. A couple of differences in structure for the slide. I wanted to show the board of the difference between our expected and adopted uh two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget numbers. So when the budget was passed, we uh explored, when the budget was adopted last April, at that time, we were expecting thirty-three million uh nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in revenue. Um what we're actually expecting to receive, we haven't gotten all the revenues in yet. But as the numbers were updated from last April to, to this past March, that number decreased um to thirty-three point seven million. So we lost about two, almost three hundred thousand dollars in expected revenues. Um and that's just something that we have to be mindful of is even right now today, we're operating on uh state aid numbers from January. Uh the state, for those of you that uh have been paying attention to all of you, probably recognize that the state has delayed their state budget, which has effectively delayed our um projections for aid. Uh very, very many districts in the state of New York with, experienced a downturn in the foundation. Um foundation aid is the largest portion of our state aid share. Our district is uh recognizing a six point seven percent downturn in just our foundation aid categorical mode. Um the state, many of our legislature legislators claim to be fighting for us to get a minimum of a three percent increase from uh last year's foundation aid. So if that happens for us, that would be significantly impactful. Uh three percent increase to foundation aid as projected last year versus the six percent decrease this year would be recognized to the tune of an increase of about uh just over three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. Uh unfortunately, we can't guarantee or bank on it. And so right now, what you, again, if you remember from last year, our last revenue line is always our fund balance appropriation line. That is money from this year's budget that's not expended, that we put forward towards next year's budget to help offset and reduce the tax. In order to balance our budget right now today, we have to appropriate one point seven five seven million dollars from this year towards next. If you remember at, at our last budget uh workshop, I did share that that number has crept up from three hundred and seventy-five thousand to one point eight million over the last six years. Um it's not sustainable to keep going. Our goal this year was to bring that number back from one point eight, which was our last year number. That was the highest number we've ever had. And it was directly following a year that we did not maximize our tax levy. Um so making up the difference, we had to allocate three hundred thousand dollars more than we did the year previously. Um, when we started the budget process this year, that number was north of two million. There's no way we could even entertain that. Uh, and so we've trimmed it back south of one point eight just by enough. Um, if the state revenue projections come in our favor, that number could be trimmed all the way back to one point five or close. Uh, ideally for uh, the fiscal health of the district, we want to get that number under one point five million perspective. Uh, it's a gradual mission to get there. So right now we're okay with the one point seven, but I say that. Again, with a grain of salt because we lost three hundred thousand in state aid last year from projections to actuals. If that happens again, this number goes back up to two hundred, so to to two million. So. It's a concern. Uh, it's a very real concern and I want to be very transparent with the board that uh. We're being very conservative with anything that we're electively increasing. And there's very few things that make that cut. We'll show you that's a summary within a moment. Um, but I just wanted to share this with you because revenues are a little serious. Um, the state aid projections right now again are are showing us increasing one hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. But we took a three hundred thousand dollar loss, so I have to consider that a loss. I have to come into this budget season recognizing a four percent increase in inflation. Recognizing a tax levy limit of three point two two percent. And understanding that our state aid could drop another a half a percent to a percent of our operating budget. So uh, again, I did reference the summary of changes. These seven bullets. Are the entirety of the changes to our budget this year in terms of significant movement of dollars. Um, we've added a health aid and a special education teacher to the budget. We've increased funding for contract nursing services and a lot of that is due to a shortage of available nurses. So when we need a nurse for any particular reason, we have not been able to find uh, nurses to hire. And we've had to rely on contract services more this year than we have in the past. So we had to increase the funding for that as we don't anticipate that market to change in the next eighteen months. Um, we've increased the funding for public information services through Bosse's. Uh, some of that is through our local Bosse's. A large portion of that is cross contracted through Putnam, Northern Westchester Bosse's. Uh, they've done a phenomenal efforts this year in managing our publications. Our public information, as you can, as you're well aware, you've got lots to talk about this year. Um, and so they've been really helpful to us in that endeavor and we expect that to continue next year as well. Reallocation. So that's just four adds. The rest has been moving things around. Uh, for the instructional technology department, we're replacing a tech administrator. With uh, a technology integrated or the teacher on special assignment that would really be working on a peer level to educate our, our instructional team. Uh, as well as a help desk technician who's going to help the boots on the ground team, uh, is currently a team of two, supporting over a thousand users in our district. Um, and again, just as a reminder, we were forced to go one to one. Um, four years ago, and when we did that, the amount of devices in the district effectively tripled. Uh, so we need an extra body to help support that work. Okay, um. We've also added private school tuition, uh, or we've reallocated money that was to for private school tuition for students with disabilities that we've. Had the, the benefit of being able to bring back into an in-house program. So that's bringing the money that we were spending outside and bringing it back in this. So let's talk about contingency budget. Uh, this is probably the, the least exciting when we talk about a budget season. The vote does not pass. Uh, and you can read the slide. I won't have to read it for you. Uh, and I'll, I'll kind of relay the message in plain English, right? If the voters do not authorize a new tax levy, then we have to remain with the last tax levy they authorized, which is the current year tax levy. Um, our tax levy increase is projected to be eight hundred and forty four thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars. If we don't get the approval to raise the taxes that much, then we don't get to raise the taxes that much. We have to reduce the budget to offset that loss of revenue. Uh, we are a district that only receives about twenty three percent uh, aid from the state between twenty and thirty percent. So we're largely funded uh, by tax revenue. And when that revenue was reduced, it's a significant impact to our operating budget. So we have to calculate. Certain things are mandated to come out of your budget in a contingency. Um, the first thing that comes out is all equipment has to come out of the budget. The second thing that has to come out are all non-union employee uh, salary increases also got to trend. So when that happens, um, you can see here. Salary increases for non-human staff comes out to twenty three thousand five hundred. All the equipment in our budget came out to a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. So that was less than a quarter of a million when we had to close a gap of eight hundred and forty four thousand. And so uh, the administration went in and and picked. It was really, it's a challenging conversation to have to decide what we can do without the budget that is so lean at the beginning. Um, we tried to focus on things that are not directly student facing. Uh, and we were able to come up with an additional three hundred thousand dollars in potential cuts should we have to go to contingency. Um, that leaves us with three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Unaccounted for. That would have to be further reductions and be honestly, um. Not to shoot the fuck anything, but the only way that comes out of the budget is in the form of people. Is we've trimmed almost everything else. Um, so that would be a loss of staff. And having already leaned out support staff in that three hundred thousand dollar line item, we would be looking at instructional staff of some sort. Um, and I, we're not in a place, I think, where we're ready to commit to who those people are. Um, but if we go down this road, we would have to have those conversations. And just to be clear for the board. If the May twenty first uh, proposition one fails, we don't have to go automatically to contingency. That's the board's discretion. We can put up a second budget. Uh, that could be somewhere in the middle uh, of that eight forty four. So. If for some reason our voters did not find that eight hundred and forty four thousand dollar increase palatable. Um, we could propose perhaps something to the tune of a five hundred thousand dollar reduction or a four hundred thousand dollar reduction and we bid and we vote. Rather than go immediately contingency and if that vote fails, we would have to go to uh, the contingency budget. So here's our budget at a glance. Our current year budget is three thirty three million, nine ninety nine. Our uh, projected budget for next year currently stands at thirty four million, five ninety one, seven thirty eight, a difference of five ninety two, three sixty five. Uh, our tax levy is showing uh, an increase of eight forty four, two thirty one. And and again, the reason why those numbers are disjointed. Is because of the significant decrease in our stated, right? We have to, we have to offset revenue somehow. And and so when you're looking at this as a taxpayer, I could totally understand the feeling of why are my taxes going up more than the budgets going up? And the reason is the other revenues are not going up and our expenses are. So that's the short version of that story. But even there, uh, we're trying to be very conservative with the budgets and budget, um, increase of one point seven four. Uh, and and that is despite the inflation factor of four point one two uh, for the, for the current year. So we're, we're actually raising our budget less than the rate of inflation for our region. Um, and our levy to levy uh, increase would be three point two two and that is within the New York State tax.
Did you say four point one two for the current year?
Um, yeah, four point one two for the uh, the inflation factor for the Biden calabas.
Who comes up with that?
New York State.
So they projected.
We'll get to the other ones, yeah, comments.
What was that? Any questions from the board?
Yes. Okay, first, uh, and I'll speak for myself and I, I know other some, I know most of the board, if not all of it feels the same way. Uh, I would, will never vote for any employees to uh, lose their job. And I will never vote to authorize administration to prepare, to prepare a layoff list. That being said, uh, let's move on to other questions uh, that I do have. Has EMTs and our paramedics state licensed have been uh, been examined to be used instead of nursing? So contracted with nursing services? Under state law. Okay, and because they would come in cheaper compared to what they're being paid for commercial ambulance uh, services. Uh, but that, that's for another day. But uh. Since I am on the board of education, if you go to the preview, this is the board of education. The top line says total board of education. On the preview expenses. Uh, since the board does not get paid, what does uh, sixty eight, proposed sixty eight thousand and twenty one dollars? Be spent on besides the owl or uh? So can you explain?
I can, give me one second.
I've been on the board eight years and I still, still don't understand why the figure is so high.
Okay, board of education expenses. Okay, so. Within that uh, total board of education number, um, includes uh, board of education contract, uh, conference fees and expenses. Board policy fees, label fees for advertisements, uh, board arbitration and negotiations. Uh, board services provided by the board of education, including our board doc subscriptions, Zoom and Superreval uh, software. Um, board supplies and materials is in that budget. A portion of the district clerk's salary and equipment come out of that budget, as well as contractual expenses. Related to.
Understood then, since I was unaware that the uh, the board uh, secretary comes out of there, the clerk comes out of there.
Yes, as well as the cost of the elections and the votes and his effect.
But if you're looking for a couple of bucks to trim, I'm sure you could take off the uh, the difference of seven hundred and seventy two dollars. And use it for something uh, more important. Hey, every penny counts. And that's, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Other questions? So how close are you to having, you know, basically a contingency plan? I mean, I know the number, but.
We have an unfortunate plan. Um, we've had discussions even up until today looking for. I mean, we literally went line by line looking for every single, like you said, every penny counts, right? We looked in every single line compared to um, this year, even went back to as far as twenty fifteen to try and get averages in some cases. Um, noting the fact that obviously things cost a lot more than they did in twenty fifteen. Um, but really trying to get a feel for what's the consistent use of particular lines to try and make, you know, responsible decisions. Because the last thing you want to do is take money out of somewhere and then, you know, need it next year. Um, so we analyzed everything. We analyzed, um, you know, even projections for our special education programming, the tuitions for out of district students. And you know, we have some unfortunate facts that if we have to present them at the next board meeting, we're prepared to do that. But we'd really like to avoid it, like you said, Howard, because we are talking about people.
And just to be clear, like there's big ticket things that we're not moving the needle on. So uh, we've renegotiated portions of the transportation contracts. To increase the revenue that comes from the revenue eligible lines versus the straight expense lines. Um, they've been very amicable with that process. Uh, we've also have not increased our utilities budget. So I know we talk a lot about uh, sustainable efforts and and I got to give Mr. Mullins credit, what he's been able to manage from a labor perspective by. Uh, taking advantage of uh, built this activities, projects, when people are in the buildings and using that labor to modulate our utility costs. We've been able to keep that level as well. So despite um. Climbing costs across the board, John's budget is actually down by seven thousand dollars. So uh, there, there's a lot of. Labor efforts going into offset things we can't control and that's just an example of that as well.
Elliot, I do have a question. Where would um, stipends, what, what do stipends fall under? What?
Uh, stipends are in the, uh, I think they're down in, hold on, you mean expense side? They're in the uh. Instructional support, I believe. Let me just dodge.
And not all of them.
Not all of them.
Right, probably some, it depends on the, right. So there were some stipends that weren't utilized this year.
Actually budget for them though. So what we do is every year we sit and we um, go over with the principles because some of them are listed contractually. Um, and we go through with the principles and we look at what stipends are actually utilized going to be filled. So we might have something in fund balance, say for like not having a particular athletic team. So that will go this year back into our fund balance. And if we believe that we will have that sport next year, then they are built into the budget. But there are some that are listed in, say, the teacher's contract. Um, but we haven't had and haven't used. So when we go through the budget, we fine tune those numbers. Um, we think we're not projecting to have it again.
I'm just wondering if the thirty three million, you know, nine ninety nine, if. Are we using every single? Penny?
No, and that's fun balance.
Right.
Yes, so that's, so that's a budget, right? Just like your household budget, it's what you project to spend. Um, and then the fund balance comes from what has not been funded and that's from a bunch of different places.
Right. So I remember we talked about this a little bit more in depth than last year, but we have to be able to provide fair and appropriate public education to. Any student that comes to the district at any time. So we have to have money available for our special ed students to get services. That may not happen.
Yep.
Um, and and but we're right, we're ready for it to happen. And again, what that readiness looks like is more conservative than it used to be. So we're, yeah, we could have, we, we could have had ten students in a program and had three seats as contingent, like maybe if this kid showed up, now it's less. Now it's, we still have a cushion, but it's not nearly the cushion we had. So we've been bleeding off those cushions and that's how we've been able. To, over the last six years, increase that annual fund balance allocation. But we're, we were looking this year out three to four years ahead at everything. So I'll give you an example. Um, teachers get entitled to a retirement incentive. I've looked at the age and years of service for every teacher in the district and who's able to retire over the next six years. So that I know that from now till then, I'll have enough money on average to cover what we think will incur in that line. Um, and and those can be chunky numbers too, right? So. For where we can do it, like Caroline said, we look at our special ed numbers back six years and oh, we're going, we think like, okay, these kids are going to age out. But we've got little ones with high needs that are going to go into this kind of a program. It's a moving target, but we're doing the best we can, but that, that cushion is sure.
Can I just ask if, if there's other districts that are kind of in a similar situation, maybe even larger districts with. Even bigger problems than we could possibly have. Um, when the state aid comes out and here's your number, you might have been expecting this, whatever. Do, is there any, um, I don't even know what the word is. Where the districts would write letters to the state? Like, is there any kind of? Yeah, pushback, like if there's parents listening, um, is there any? You know, I don't want to stir anything, but you know, if anyone is listening, you know, do we write letters to, you know, the governor's office? Is there things like that? Because I'm seeing, you know, we're a smaller district and this is, this could be not fun. And I'm assuming there's other people because of inflation, because of lack of state aid.
And those other districts in far worse circumstances than you're in, um. Some, you know, due to really large cuts to, I mean, way worse cuts to their um, packages, their aid packages. Um, you know, we were really careful in that when we received the stimulus money from COVID, we were very careful. To not do things that would then be, you know, recurring costs. So for an example. Um, any salary that we have put into those grants to bring in, say, extra mental health, because we have done that, right? Extra support. Um, we spent the three years of those multi-year grants. Moving them by portion into the general fund budget. So it was manageable when those grants went away. Some folks didn't manage it that way and are dealing with bigger deficits and gaps to close. Um, we are part, I know Elliot, Amy and I are all part of. Different, um, you know, organizations, one being like the lower Hudson Council of Superintendents. There's been a strong um, advocacy. Um, and very constant, like advocating coming out of the, the lower Hudson region. Um, but really any organization that we work with. Uh, is making the same advocacy efforts and not just for big small, it doesn't matter, you know, every district has been impacted in some way.
For even the Baptist County School Board Association. Right after that meeting, we had, there's an advocacy so that, you know. I have, this is not going to sound nice, but they couldn't care less about Melburg in the state, right? It's uh, that little district, you know, from a few bucks and there we are. And, and a lot of our districts, Pauling, we've been talking, you know, we all sort of feel the same way. And and I mean, the one lucky thing for Melburg is we never got much aid to begin with. So how much can they take? Um, but we're trying to, like we just did, um. A letter to the state about the whole electric bus thing. There's one about this raising the um, the cap on CTE. There's one about this raising the um the cap on CTE employees. Um, can't remember the rest of them, but. And then the idea is that we can all sign it so that, you know, Wapandrews and Arlington and Pauling and Melburg. You know, if we all say, you know, you gotta cut the crap and, you know, help us, uh, maybe it has more effect. I don't know. I'm I'm a cynic when it comes to stuff like this.
Glass half empty.
My glass broke on the ground.
The point is not, it's not a Melburg problem, it's a state.
Yeah, right, right.
Anybody that's, you know, a lot of our local lawmakers that are running right now, some of them are very much keyed in on this issue when they're making up like the top line on their little flyer, like I'm fighting for equitable school funding or, you know, increasing of foundation. So that is, is like a line item on the state budget. So if we were going to give anybody like, if we're arming anyone with information, it's very simple. Uh, when the state settles their budget, our aid gets settled. And so if if you're going to make any sort of advocacy attempt or lobbying efforts, just talk to your local lawmakers and let them know that this is the impact of these things that they're looking at in all of it, right? When they're thinking that it's just a ethereal concept of school funding, you know, what does three percent look like? Well, for Melburg, three percent can be the difference of two full-time teachers. And that's, you know, we we try to put things in 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 terms of people can understand, these are human beings. These are people in front of our kids, teaching our kids, and are ready to sustain their employment. But that's where their vote matters in all of it.
And when we speak about things and we say, oh, this is an unfunded mandate, like this is why it matters so much. Um, for an example, Alex, her meeting ago, and she was speaking about the state's decision to, um, you know, to extend the enrollment of special education students to the age of twenty-two, right? That's great, and we love our students and we'll keep them, and, you know, we'd love to keep them until they're prepared to go into adulthood, but we don't have the funding for that, right? And so that extension came with, we're not going to fund them, but you're going to keep them kind of thing. So, you know, when it sounds negative, um, what we have to be realistic and say, it's just not something we can do through their twenty-second year. It's really because we literally don't have the funding to do it, and they're not going to be extending the funding that's, you know, passed on to school districts in order to do it. So, you know, some things may seem, you know, sort of callous in the conversation that we have, but in reality, it's because we we can't do it.
If boards, if boards would unite with each other and push back against unfunded mandates, state aid would be for, whether they're going to threaten again. It's, what are they going to do? Call a cop, you know, they don't, they can threaten all they want. But if if unfunded mon- unfunded mandates are not honored by a group and not an individual district, uh, they would have to listen or do something, I mean, make it work.
That's where we are with the EV buses, right? It's a legislative mandate at this point. The law said we have to do this. There's absolutely nothing realistic about how we're going to do it, um, for anyone, right? Anyone who's had a feasibility study done, they'll tell you, you know, if it's half of their fleet that they could convert, the other half can't even do the runs and their infrastructure and road.
Companies, the bus, the building of the bus companies, they can't produce them.
But we still have to do it, right? So this is where we go.
I know.
You know, we're trying to balance this in the best way that we can, the realistic conversations, um, that come to a place that we really don't want them to come.
They're not always realistic, and that's, that's a big part of the issue.
And that's why I think we have to ask these questions, if, you know, I I wish there were more public on there. And I think unfortunately, people are so busy nowadays, they, until it comes right down to that moment. You don't realize all the background information of it, and, you know, I just pray that there's people on there listening and knowing that this is the real situation.
Districts have to have a budget in to be voted on. The state legislature, well, they can miss the budget date, they can raise it, they can raise ten percent if they want. There's no cap for them. Uh, you know, it's, what the Mel Brooks who said it's good to be the king.
Thank you.
Anything else for? All right, um, why don't we, um. If you could have, uh, did you have questions about the budget from the public? Did you want?
The only public guy.
This is the public.
I ain't showing up at these houses. No, no, I was just, you mentioned inflation, I was just curious only through that. I had totally different questions. Uh, it kind of crossed over between the budget and the propositions you have, if I can ask a question on it for clarification.
Sure.
Or is that out of bounds?
No, I mean, I wanted.
So I, I watched a video on the web that you had done, is it, let's see.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think you did the part of the financing. So, um, I just want to make sure I understand. You mentioned one to one point five million is in the unassigned balance fund potentially?
Oh, no, that's one.
So is that from last year or going into a new budget?
So what happened was, um, we're allowed, we're restricted to a four percent maximum of unassigned fund balance, that's leftover money with no.
So that's last year's done?
That was last year's one.
Okay, are are we creating a similar amount with the new budget?
No, so if I can clarify, that was not supposed to be assigned. It was assigned for a specific purpose. The laws changed from twenty-three to twenty-four, and that purpose is no longer an applicable place to to uh house savings.
So if we weren't doing a rebuild of school, what would have happened to that money?
Uh, that money would uh either be leveraged to offset the tax levy, or could be refunded to the taxpayers, or it could be put into an assigned fund balance.
Okay, the intent is to put it towards the proposition.
Correct, to offset the the tax burden.
Proposition two, which is the. So going to there now, um, I was just looking at the numbers, I I just want to try and sort of, she said about a ten million is in reserves. That would be applied to proposition two.
Correct.
Regardless of whether three or four is approved.
Correct.
And then you said New York State might offer about eleven million?
Um, I don't know.
I thought the number, was it eleven or nineteen? Uh, no, nineteen with the current bonds we have.
We have existing.
So you would just renew those out pretty much.
Or we replace the other amounts, yes.
But what is New York State offering out of that whole thing?
Oh, I think, are you asking about our?
The aid, so, New York State's going to aid us on every bit of the forty-eight, fifty-five, then there's a seven point six million energy performance function. They're not going to aid us on that because they're going to consider that a cost neutral, yeah.
But, well, I I thought I, I think eleven million, I thought was a number.
I think the eleven million, it's eleven point five, I'm pretty sure, and that comes from our capital reserve of ten million dollars plus the one point five that would be.
So out, so out of this, so let's just take the fifty-five million part alone. Um, what's the net? And that you have to borrow besides the nineteen renewal? Uh, once all the aid's in place, you move the excess money over and over.
Okay, so out of the four, I'm going to use round numbers because I'm just going up. So out of the forty-eight, you would take eleven five off.
Yeah.
Um, because it's actually out of the fifty-five, seven point six comes off to get to the forty-eight. And then eleven five is funded in cash. But the state's going to aid us from every bit of the forty-eight, whether we have cash or we take out a bond. So.
By how much?
About twenty-three percent is our.
Twenty-three percent. So so I'm just curious, is it, is it safe to assume nineteen and seven is about twenty-six million of bonding? That we're going to be, that represents the tax increase for that one prop too?
Uh, roughly, let me just take a look at what I have. So like, I'm, uh.
I just have one more question after that.
Yeah, it's it's around twenty million dollars, and again, very round numbers.
So so I'm just curious, when I looked through the charts, I thought about potential tax increase in, I looked at the four hundred K line item.
Okay.
Uh, I'm just curious if if it's about twenty roughly. Um, and the taxes, let's say that four hundred K behind is two twenty-six for a basic start, because that's what you focused on in the video too. And the next two props, two and three, I would assume most of that we would be funding through bonding, two and three?
Uh, right, two and three would be, would be bond funded, uh, I'm sorry, three and four.
Three, I'm sorry, three and four. So that, so that's like twenty-two million roughly, right?
Uh, I believe.
Right, so if you add up, I'm just asking as a side note, since we're following through. If you add up the difference in taxes for those three and four, why is it higher than? By saying more significant than the prop?
It's not a straight line calculation, it's actually amortization tables out, and it's based on when the debts are taken out and when the old debt folded. So they look at it at a twenty-year picture, uh, and if I can show you just for a second, uh, while I'm on the screen.
Does it look like a twenty percent or more?
It it it's not straight line, and actually, that's what our finance company does on.
And you can always do three and four later on theoretically, right?
Yes.
Is the state funding any of that now or later?
When you say state funding.
Well, aid, I mean.
Everything's aidable.
Everything is aidable.
Everything's aidable.
So are we limited on aid that they'll provide? Is it per prop or is it per amount of spend?
The issue is, um, so I'll show you here, this is a. Okay, so this is. Just, just to show you a a depth picture of what that looks like with the the full project and how the debt is, see, it doesn't all hit on the same year. If I go back another, and and this was uh something that we can have our finance company speak to more directly, but. Where is the aid picture? Okay, so you can see, like, for the next three years, we're, we're spending all of this on debt. And then after twenty twenty-seven, the old debt starts to come off, so we want to fill in these gaps.
That's a nineteen million?
That's, that's where that nineteen million is going to fund them, these bars here coming off the books and us filling in that debt. Without having to increase taxes necessarily, offset. Okay, um, but how we plan this project, when when you talk about can we do uh four or three and four later? Sure, we can, but some of the, one of the benefits of planning the project this way is if we do two, three and four together, we can plan for any overlapping construction. So that if we have to open the wall behind me for a one part of phase three and one part of phase four, I want to open the wall once and then close it up once. If I have to open it twice, there's going to be additional construction cost plus the escalation cost of delaying the work a year, two years, three years. So the short answer is, yes, the later propositions could be delayed, but also, yes, there would be a potential increase in cost because of the time delay and any redundancy.
You don't know all those nuances now to know that you'd save anything.
I know that doing.
Well, no, yeah, I understand the plus one, but do you know that going from uh two to three to four, that there are half of the building that's going to be affected again as you go across the property?
We do know uh some of the scope, yeah, so for example, um.
Some of the scope, you don't really know all of it.
Correct, but if I'm doing the, if any sort of, any of the interior renovations, like for this building, that don't get done with proposition one, we could have construction with this, because I'm working the roof off, I'm doing the ceilings, I'm doing the lights, I'm doing windows. So anything that I do in this room, after I replace the lights and windows, require the lights, some of the lights to come down, some of the ceiling to come down, and perhaps some of the wall to be opened back up. So there, is it quite easily quantifiable right now to the dollar? No, but I can tell you with the line item wise, which things would have redundancy in scope.
And yeah, I saw on one of the charts, uh, and by the way, the charts you put up, I think, are the newest ones, because the one on the web, I just printed up a little data.
Off the jump check, right?
Yeah, so, um, it said you may in the newsletter, what does may mean? In terms of what you send the taxpayer?
I'm not sure where.
In one of the charts I saw, you may publish information regarding the May voting time period.
Yeah, so we, we just finalized.
They use the word may as if they may or may not mail it out, and I just want to say, because I think you're over, right?
No, in fact, that's the one.
Anyway, I had a call to see where the normal letter is that you file, uh, send out to us in a minute, because sometimes I don't get them at all.
So the.
Reminding us of when the task.
Yeah, so that's a regular budget newsletter, we'll be sending.
Here, you have my, when I said you.
And so we just also, um, just finalized the proof actually, Amy's will be in right there, for there will be a capital project newsletter as well.
Okay, and that's what I think this was referring to. So you're going to mail them to us or?
And Tony, my lords, last year, a lot of people in the Clinton Corners area did not get it, including myself. I checked with the post office, for whatever reason, OCS did not provide, did not make it to the Melbrook Post Office. To be handed out and to Clinton Corners, that should not happen this year. Last year or the year before, I think, pre the last superintendent, it did not make it.
All right, thanks. All right. Karen, did you want anything else on the side that you're, I I consider you're public?
I feel your pain. You know, you know, Frey mentioned the Dutchess County School Boards, we will pay and do the New York State School Boards, so. I mean, I don't follow them, I'm assuming they're a member. Adu's there, you know, they're our lobby group, so, you know, there, you see those emails? And I will just add that in Pauling, um, we vote as a board on whether we want to send a community email out that we want the superintendent to send an email out to our public, um, it, it has formed, like form letters that just click here to let you local legislators, and we get good response with that. So it's something that you might want to think about, of getting, to get the community involved. Uh, we come from the superintendent and just click here, and it goes to, you know, like, for us, it's like law or and Austin and blah, 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 blah. But remember, you're representative, I mean, you have to say, it helps get your community involved. Thank you a lot, Karen.
Thank you.
New business. If I'm in the right spot, um, do a little motion to accept the uh donation from the MEF of two thousand seven hundred and two dollars?
So moved.
Do we second?
Second.
Questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I want to say thank you.
All in favor?
I.
I will put it again. Next is the seeker recommendation, do I have a motion to uh accept the seeker recommendation as documented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Y'all, y'all, the speaker is, right? Did you want to, uh, just a quick definition?
Yes, um, so Sabra is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, um, the district, anytime, anytime a capital project is is put in. Make one of the propositions for the project or a doubt, the school district or the municipality, any municipality must designate a lead agency for environmental quality review. And under this resolution, the board is deciding to do that as a part of yourselves, and this is not uncommon for school districts to do. Uh, basically, what this is saying is that a project that we are looking to undertake will not have a significant environmental impact as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And and one of the biggest delimiters of that is more than ten thousand square feet of new addition uh space. So if you're expanding your footprint by fewer than ten thousand square feet, it triggers a a more intensive, what they call a type one, uh, secret review. Um, because our book is in terms of square footage increases less than six thousand, and it's really just the grid outside of the vestiges for our new homeowners.
About the library?
Uh, it's not an expansion beyond the property, because we're staying within the lines. And we took pictures of it and showed it to the environmental consultants. Uh, we're expanding the square footage of the, of the building, but not the property, because already paved, it's all right, we're not, we're not. This is really for like stormwater runoff, erosion, things like that. Uh, whether you're using retaining walls, like for example, if we were building an extension towards Alden and the creek was going to be disrupted, that would be a major type one thing that we have to do all this kind of studies and research to remediate before construction. So not applicable in this case, this is a type two uh project under seeker, and it just requires, I believe, a roll call vote with the clerk, um, with the board to authorize it.
Uh, Dina? Uh, yes. Howard?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the um bond propositions, do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, questions, comments?
Yes, I do have a comment or a couple of comments. The board has, has, went over this numerous times and feels that we have the district and for the taxpayers as as fiduciary, we've tried to, and thanks to Mr. Garcia and Superintendent Peddler, uh, trimmed it as as best as it could be best done to save taxpayer money. These buildings need to be rehabilitated and brought up to uh current spec for years to come. Uh, and and that's what this project will do. Hopefully, the public will agree with with the board, uh, since the board is the stewards for the public, that the public will vote and approve all of these propositions. I do want to make a comment that, uh, I'll, I'll read a quote former President Harry S. Truman said, back when he was a senator in charge of the Truman Committee, and he battled corruption and helped during World War Two. Back when he was a senator in charge of the Truman Committee and he battled corruption and helped, uh, during World War Two. While going over contracts and, and that will apply to, uh, his current four propositions. And hopefully, uh, board oversight of, of the work that will be done in the future, once this is approved. Uh, President Truman said, I have had considerable experience in, in public contracts and I have never yet. Found a contractor who have not watched, would not leave the government, holding the bag. We are not doing him, meaning the contractors, a favor if we are not watching him. And I am sure, uh, Mr. Garcia, that will be the case.
Sir.
And, and the board will provide oversight as well. Uh, thank you.
Any other comments, question? All in favor? Never mind.
Dina?
Yeah.
Howard?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Leadership report. Just a couple of things, um, we, we'll be doing the vote on, uh, that's getting both these. Budgets that we just saw on the twenty third at five thirty. Will also be adopting the, um, budget and publicly the voter initiated propositions at the sixteenth of April. Um, one sort of new piece of news, um, Jason, the superintendent of O C's has resigned. Um, uh, it's a personal help thing, uh, or family help, um, just. To me, I, you know, I really hate to see Jason leave. Um, I think he's made a lot of really big changes, especially to see the, um, so best of luck to Jason. Um, and I think that's all I have from my side. Chris, do you have any?
No, I just wanted to thank the admin and the capital projects, uh, team, just for putting in countless hours and days to get where we are and. The propositions and, and weeding it down and the tough decisions. I, it's, it was a pleasure and I appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Chris. All right, Carolyn?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I do have some items on here that might be some, somewhat redundant. So I will skip and certainly not steal his thunder for the first bullet point. Um, Alden teachers will be working with Dr. Sobrin, our math consultant on six days throughout the month of April, so. Um, we just think it's important to continue to mention that ongoing threat of professional development that's happening across the district. Um, we're really proud of being able to offer this in both math and literacy. Um, and really strengthening our, our teaching practices, especially in response to the global pandemic and really trying to close the, um, education gap that was left. In the week of the pandemic, um, O C's will be here to support our. Our fifth grade students with investigations, so that's pretty neat, because this will help them to prepare for their science test, New York State Science Test that's coming. As the standards change, sometimes the expectations and the tested areas change a bit. So it will be interesting to. See, um, what that's going to look like on May ninth, the first time they'll be taking this exam. Elm drive really excited to be welcoming our I D M engineers back for end of the day on the fifth, this Friday. And they will be working with Shelley Klein, their literacy coach for the P two special. Marking period three is coming to an end before our next board meeting, so hard to believe that it's already here. But April twelve will mark the end of the third marking period of the school year, so then it is a sprint to the finish, as you all know. Um, and Elm Drive will be hosting its Blue Ribbon Blazer Assembly, recognizing students who exhibited acceptance and introduced M V M as a focus for the month of April. We've had some additional information sessions planned for the capital project and they will be coming up. We have created information, um, postcards to publicize those as well, but please, anyone who is listening, feel free to email. Um, district dot info at millbrook c s d dot org. If you have any questions, we will be happy to answer them for you. I did wanna congratulate Matt Thew, who wasn't here this evening. He is moving from our custodial department to our maintenance department, so he will be joining. Um, Chris Beal, who is here, and the maintenance crew, and also congratulations to, um, Freddie Alvarado, who was selected for the position of lead custodial worker. He was here, um, Chris and Freddie are two examples of the folks who were here before the sun comes up to make sure that the boilers are on running. They check every single building, every single room in every single building, I should say, so, um. As you can tell, they, they are here and they are sleeping by this time of the evening, ready to go home and do it all over again tomorrow. Um, we'll be sharing communication with parents about, uh, the upcoming solar eclipse on April eighth, and Dr. Watkins has some really exciting information about that, that she'll share in her report. Um, New York's finest speakers will be here on April twenty fifth in the Millbrook High School at a Torian Room six thirty to eight P M. Please, if anyone is listening, get the word out. These are really awesome, um, parent information sessions. I know there was such rate of views for, um. Steered straight that had come a couple of weeks ago, and though this is on a different topic, it is sure to be just as informative. Uh, we have a college and career fair coming up at the high school on April ninth, and we will have a wellness fair on May ninth. And so grandparents' day is scheduled for April twenty sixth. That is an annual event, super excited about it. And this is a kind of one to give a special thanks to the P T O members and also the volunteers who've been working really hard in preparation. And I have some information about our athletics, the start to the spring season, varsity baseball and modified baseball and softball teams have begun their spring practices on the field. They're off to a great start and, um, even with all the rain, the fields have held up really nicely and remain playable. We'll see how they make it through this week. Um, we're gonna have another tough rainy week, but. Um, either way, they are ready to begin play, um, official game season soon. The varsity and modified boys and girls track team are off and running. We currently have seventy five student athletes participating in track, so that's unbelievable, right? Um, seven to twelve, we have seventy five students. The varsity girls golf team has already been hitting the golf course, practicing preparation for their spring match, which they are soon to play. And we have three high school students who are participating in the merged Wiga Talk, uh, softball team, and they are off to a great start and enjoying their. That is all I have. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Question? This might sound like a silly question, but for grandparents' day, the children that don't have grandparents, are they able to bring someone else?
Yeah, yeah, just a special adult. I, we just.
Didn't used to be that way, that's why I'm asking.
I know, we're, we're about including everything.
No, it's a good question.
I had a question as well about the snow days. I know we discussed it last time, but do we use three? Snow days? I thought we only used two.
Uh, we only use two, and if you recall, there was a conversation, which, I don't know why you would. Um, it was a, a little tiny conversation that we had had about the fact that we only built in a hundred eighty nine instead of a hundred ninety days. So we really only had five that we were.
Oh, okay, because the ca- the calendar still says six, so I was a little confused.
Probably something from yesteryear, so we're always looking to make the one eighty four. There was some conversation that happened about that too, for clarification, but.
Okay.
We are correct with the give back days and the days that we've had thus far.
Okay, so it's really based on five?
It's really based on a hundred and eighty plus four.
Got it.
Um, but I know that when you do math the other way, if you assume there's a hundred ninety days, then it gets confusing, so apologies if there's a, that though.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, Amy?
Sure, okay, so I'll try not to repeat too many other things. You're gonna hear some really popular remarks regarding communication, so, um. This is going to address tomorrow, to print tomorrow, and should be arriving in mailboxes sometime next week. It'll be full size. This is just a, a mockup, just to show, but it'll, it'll come to you this way. You'll open it, you'll see on the back page. But this is solely devoted to our capital project to talk through, again, those four pillars. So there's a whole section talking through the methods, the connected, the sustained, that we have this course. Now on the back page, just really talking about those numbers that we were already learning to tonight to make it easier. It also includes a Q R code, so that it can be easier for, for families, if this is on their. Their, uh, island, they can zoom in and open up without having to search through our webpage. It'll take you to our capital page, which also has a link to the. The general, um, budget, just so that you can see that as well. Um, I know that we mentioned the postcards. Did you bring this?
I did, I'll bring it back.
That's what, that's what I. Um, we, those will also be going out to notify all of our residents, not just our families within the district of, um, additional presentations that we're having to be giving. Um, we did, as, as was mentioned, upload over break to our YouTube channel. Um, a webinar format of our presentation, so that one is just to, um, in addition to our slideshow, give some more context to what, what you're looking at, at those slides. Um, so I really wanna thank, you're gonna hear this again, so it won't take a ton of time, but seventh and eighth grade, age, a lot of that.
Un, un, unforgettable.
So, uh, I, I know Mr. Cavelo wanna talk about this, but I have the, um, good fortune of going, um, wanted to thank. In addition to allowing, um, the I B M en- engineers coming in for engineer week, uh, Mr. Mori already reached out to me early in the year. And thanks to the seventh grade team and Mr. Cavelo, allowing both our grade seven and grade eight to attend, um, three special areas. Through manufacturing, testing, and the quantum innovation studio, so, um, there are gonna be pictures, um, in the newsletter. I, I quick peek at that coming, um, but I would say that, uh, everyone was so attentive. Our students really represented Millbrook so well. Listening to, um, all of, all of the I B M engineers, including, um, Jason was there, so we had the opportunity to see him as well. And he was great at doing some of the touchscreens in the area where I was, near the quantum computer. Um, so it was great. We really appreciate that, and I know, in addition to having my own semi here, this is really nice to have our, um. Our students see about our community partners. Um. This Friday, I just wanted to mention, um, that we've shared with all of our staff, that it's, um, go, go blue H V. You see the hashtag in support of child abuse prevention, so we are inviting all of our staff to wear, um, blue. In support of child abuse, um, prevention. Uh, we have hired a short term lead replacement for, uh, Global Ten, so Sophie Weller is a graduate of Millbrook Central School District. So we're thrilled to have her supporting our students in, uh, social studies. Uh, she sent a nice letter to her parents, but if you have questions, it has a great to reach out to her. We are still seeking, um, an academic intervention support teacher for, uh, a lead replacement, so if you know anyone out there that is, uh, certified in that area. So the big, um, under I wanted to share about is you haven't heard about the solar eclipse funding. I really wanna give, uh, a shout out again to another community partner, the Millbrook Library. They have, um, been working with us throughout the year on multiple occasions. And have just been, um, really helpful to us. And, uh, the library director reached out and said, hey, would you have any need for the solar glasses? And this is as it's bubbling up in all of our groups, and I'm like, um, well, why, why do you ask? And she said, well, I might have a few extra. How many kids do you have? So I gave her the number, I told her, um, she's like, she said she had plenty, she ordered lots. So, um, so we definitely have announced that these have been delivered to the buildings. They've also been delivered for our staff. Um, so we will talk a little bit later about the eclipse, and once we have that discussion, we'll be sending out information to our families. But if you are at home and you're wondering, um, be- because they're being sold everywhere, because that's what people do. Um, you do wanna double check and make sure that the code of yours is the safe code, um, so I S O one, three, two, one, two dash two. That is the safe code for these glasses. I, I have that in my, uh, register as well, so you can see that. And you should always test them by having a really bright desk lamp, um, put them on, and if you see any of the light, you really should just barely see a pinhead of, of bright light when you put it on. That's how dark it, it should be. So there are links on my report about that, so even if you're. You can click on our report to access all of that. We have been talking about our consultants. I just wanna highlight, um, how thrilled I am to have this, um, repeated exposure to our staff versus the one shot model. Of superintendent's. That doesn't allow for the deeper dive that this does, and it's really provided our teachers time to practice their craft with someone, um. With those expertise that can really provide some, um, just in time training for them, so it's been really great. I've had those follow up conversations based on feedback from our staff and working with our consultants on what it will look like as we continue next year. Cause we all grow with the process, so what are our needs as we continue to grow? And good news, the desk review that's required by New York State, um, this year for our S A grants, um, was, uh, was received. And I got feedback, there's some minor tweaks, so I've submitted those back, so. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I did have one, and then for either word, just your pamphlet. Has B B S been holding up their side of the bargain as far as marketing, as far as support, as far as all of what they sold us upfront? I just wanna make sure, because.
Uh, they gave us a lot of, uh, information. I think the picture piece is hard to do, um. They took a ton of existing condition photos and they did share them with our publisher or publication folks, so the pictures that are in there either came from us or B B S, a lot of them came from B B S. Um, so, you know, in terms of asking them to design things for publication, we've been leaning on our people to do that, and I think they've done a great job of it.
Yeah, again, Laura Christine, who I'm gonna work with Cheryl, the schedule of time, she's our communications specialist. She did such a great job working with myself, with Carolyn, with Elliot, and Cheryl, just to talk to us as the, the poor team and, um. Craft that into stories and particularly aligned with the pillars to interview students and whatnot, so. I, I really, um, owe it to her to putting that literary, um, spin on it, where we become very analytical sometimes. Um, she was able to craft it in.
And that, and you guys have done amazing. I'm just saying, as far as them being, they do this for a living, knowing, you know, what the public's looking for, what information they want, what, everything else. I just want, wanna know we're getting the support that they sold us.
They, they've given us everything we've asked, uh, and I think when we get into the, um, post referendum phase, hopefully with a positive vote, you're gonna see a lot more of their, uh, physical work.
Yeah, no, I, I don't doubt that. It's, it's more of showing the public everything they wanna see, that's all. I just wanna make sure.
Thank you for the library, cause the Pleasant Valley Library had glasses today and they were all gone, so that's really great that they have them.
Yeah.
Millbrook Library.
The Millbrook Library.
Yeah, well, Pleasant Valley, cause I live, um, said that they would have glasses today, and I went today at maybe five o'clock, and she's like, we sold out, we're gone, if they're done.
Yeah.
So, that's great.
Millbrook is still getting it.
Yeah.
They were.
And how will, how will this be distributed? Will they be given to the children before they leave?
My hope and what I asked for, depending how this goes, um, I, I sent them to the building over and, um, asked that they be distributed to the classroom teachers. To be distributed before dismissal.
Okay.
And, um, thank you to Mr. Porta, who I didn't mention, uh, I might have had it in my report, but. Mr. Porter sent out a plethora of resources for K through twelve, um, for all levels on how to talk to students about, um, the solar eclipse. And safety and what's involved, but we still would, um, ask parents to do the same. But yes, that's, the plan is not to do it before the eighth, because then we're afraid that after the sale, they might go missing. So it's kind of like, wait till the last minute, cause that might get stuffed and ripped in a bookbag.
Or become the next day fashion.
Sure. It is, it's pretty fancy.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Um, next is supposed to be John, um, Mullins, but, um, gonna, uh, skip that one, his report is there. Um, I just had one question. Did we ever figure out how who, when somebody, um, bent it, broke? Backed into the light in the parking lot?
We wanted to identify the, the vehicle, or because we had the plate, but we couldn't identify the, the person.
And is it, is it, that's all resolved?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, anything else? Elliot, how, how did they not drive six, have six different other cameras? I can understand the point of contact of where it was, but leaving, we have other cameras set up.
I would think it's impossible, we parked out there multiple days, we just walked out of the pride.
Right, or that. I, I was just.
Yeah, it, it's, it's hard to speak to in public session with.
No, no.
Places on the devices, but I would say that it, it was challenging to this site, okay.
All right, Amy, no, yes? Uh, Steve?
All right, thank you. Uh, so first and foremost, uh, a lot of stuff I'm gonna talk about, uh, has already been said, but I wanna highlight it from different, uh, avenue. Um, on behalf of all the building principals, uh. Uh, avenue, um, on behalf of all the building principals, uh, every month we put out our monthly newsletters, we've worked really hard to try and get those communications out. And standardize them, um, so our definite first, everybody here to just keep your eyes out for those monthly newsletters, because while. I mean, for building principles, all who come here, every other board meeting, uh, much of the information we're giving you is what we are giving to all our parents and all of our students. Uh, when applicable, um, so that's something. Definitely look out for, it certainly comes to more life, that we have the pictures that allow you to really see the kids in action, uh, living on these things we're talking about. Um, so, much to what Amy was talking about, um, it's been really great to see all of these people who have been working with our teachers. Part I want to highlight, um. Has been in my walkthroughs that I've done either with Amy herself or on your own, or even with other people in the building. It's been really nice to see that the work that's been happening with these folks that we've brought in to work with our teachers, coming to life in the classroom. Um, so I won't be a specific person, but, you know, I know that, uh, Garrett, for example, has been working with our E L A department and in some areas where they've been focusing on different things. And they personalize that learning experience for the teachers or their classrooms, uh, I've been seeing it come out and it's really nice, we've had some teachers. We're just really excited about the work and the way it's really pushing what they're doing in the classroom, so that's been really great. Um, I just want to speak too about, uh, the teachers, definitely here at the middle school, uh, but I've also seen them in the building as well. Uh, the work with Ruler has been absolutely beautiful, um, our teachers have really gotten to know our students in a different way in, uh, doing these building block lessons. So as we continue to finalize the building block lesson as we move to next year, and we start doing the grade level specific lessons. Especially starting it right from the beginning of the year, implement of that, and as they build on each year. Um, I think it's just gonna be another layer to the relationships that we build with our students, and we've already been seeing, seeing big, huge differences, that's really positive. Um, I want to give a big shout out to the math, E L A and grade eight science teachers, um, with state testing, as we know. Um, often we have many, uh, families who refuse the state exam, uh, but one can be pride ourselves here in Milbrook, we was having personalized learning. For all our individual students, to do that, uh, we have to have the data and the information, uh, to be able to do that, so what these folks have done. And this has happened at every grade level as, uh, the middle school as well as at Alden, uh, where we have created assignments for students to work on. Should they choose to refuse the exam, so these assignments, while the exam going on, should a family or a child refuse the exam. They're gonna be able to be doing work that's gonna give us data and information about them, that is the kind of information we need. Is, so that we can then continue to personalize their learning in those areas of math, E L A and eighth grade segments, so that's been really great, and we're really excited. Um, the guy communication has gone out to families and will be reiterated once again, um, in the newsletter coming up this fall. Uh, as far as safety, uh, tomorrow, the district safety team meeting, uh, which we are gonna be meeting, uh, with our folks over at BOCES, they always attend those with us. Uh, we're excited that we are gonna be hosting a, uh, special safety drill, much similar to the one we did about. Take three years ago, Alden Place will be assisting us, their, uh. Uh, emergency response team will join us to help within, uh, reunification drill for our sixth and eighth graders, we're not doing seventh graders because they will move to Philadelphia. So we will now be doing two thirds of the building as opposed to one third that we did the last time, uh, so we are working with planning with Mr. Gugliari. As well as his BOCES team, so that's always exciting work, uh, because we are always on the cutting edge of safety here in Milbrook. Um, as far as all the events, uh, one thing you will notice in all of these bullet, bullets is just the amount of, uh, this educational. Family that we have here, I can't say enough about whether it's what M E F does, what the library does, what the P T O does, uh, what our community members do, our families. In every event that we've had here, whether it be the National Junior Honor Society Recognition, the STEAM Fair. Um, the Steered Straight, again, I, I can't say how positive, uh, that was for our students and our staff, they had so many good things to say. I definitely want to plug all parents when we have them, to reiterate what Caroline said, the more parents we can get to come out to these events at night. Um, anything you guys can do as people in the community to tell parents how important these things are, um, they're just really great, and, uh, Mr. Delio was. Very impactful, uh, for many of our students and staff members. Uh, finally, uh, you'll also see, we just have a lot of stuff going on, so, uh, obviously our Meoson concert was great. And Mr. Rosa came down with our high school students for global games, uh, it's been a yearly tradition where they come down, I think, with middle school studies. Students, so that was also a wonderful thing, and then the, the real big, really cool highlight that I just want to add to what Dr. Rockin said about our trip to I B M. Um, and something that just really resonated with me was, as our students were there at I B M and are going through all these different things that they're doing, obviously they're. Oohing and ahhing, it's cool, it's different, um, it was really cool to hear our students talk about. How these were things like you're in our maker's phase, or like in our science classes, that let them see how stuff that they learn in middle school really can become. What they do in the real world or where it occurs in the real world, um, and then the big, the biggest coolest thing is that, um, we were told we are one of the only, if only. Middle schoolers, uh, that would ever be in the same room as the quantum computer, um, so that is a really, really cool fact, our, our middle schoolers laughing going. Well, we're the only people to ever be around this computer, um, and you know, the anecdote was that back when computers started, those desktops, they were in rooms this big. Right, now they sit in little laptops and even in our cell phones, this quantum computer is in a room this big, and for our students, one day. Ten years, twenty years down the road, when they see those tad quantum computing happening in their phone or in somewhere else, um, they're gonna remember they were in that room. So I think that's what education is all about, uh, is those cool moments that you remember and, uh, happy to say our middle school students are doing that. So look out for all of our newsletters, not just the middle school, they all will be coming up this year.
Good. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
First.
All right, clearly. Um, future agenda, I need you guys to know the deal, um. Yeah, public comment, anything on, online?
No.
No. Um. Um. Uh, next is executive session, uh, just for those that might be online or should be or would be. Um, just because we go to executive session doesn't mean the meeting is over, in fact, many times we have to. Discuss stuff in executive session, but then come back to take action in public section, in public sessions. Um, with that, do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Go to the second. All in favor? Any against?